You're too loud.
That's okay. That's the only time she says okay. All right, it's recording. I'll leave alone. Thank you. We didn't know how to set it up.
We're recording?
Seven oh one.
Yeah.
I sure do. Not long ago recorded.
Third way pause.
I was looking. I don't know either. I think we can just edit the front part off.
It's seven oh three. Call this meeting to order. All right, moving on. Approval of agendas presented.
May the most important agenda.
All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Moving on. Public comment. Welcome to floor for not a public comment.
I thought I introduced myself or I guess reintroduced myself when then probably five, six months ago. My name is Boris Seegroh for Capsome Commercial. I'm a commercial rep for her in Des Moines. I started talking to Mark, what would have been Price, six months ago about the apartment building. You guys are trying to get wrapped up, so just want to stop by, say hi. Let everybody know I'm so interested in helping you guys out with the sale of property. And when the time comes, I'm happy to come back and discuss.
Hopefully be soon. Thanks, Boris. The other. We'll do you here a little bit. Other public comments. Moving on. The review of the 2023 Storm Sewer Project bids.
So on June eighth, we took bids for the Storm Sewer, Storm Sewer, the project. We received quite a bit of interest. We had nine heads. The low bid being steel excavating around Ohio with a basement of $118,924.55. That was the section that we reviewed up on Race Street. At Seventh Street Circle. Their bid open one was the section down on Main Street, the sound map of that. For a hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents. The middle two was from second to third again on Main Street. That was seventy four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. The second lowest was Iowa murders out of Huxley. They were a hundred and twenty eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars on the basement, so about ten thousand dollars more. Their alternates were significantly lower, about twenty thousand more. Everybody else kind of went up from there. So we got some good bids. We're under our estimate. Couple options the council has available based on budget constraints toward the base and all the two.
So do you know the one of Huxley? Do you know that company or?
We've worked with them before. Do a lot of utility and grading work. We don't have experience with steel and monozoom, but they did provide some references. They do a lot of projects in this dollar amount. All the storm sewer projects, I don't know what they focus on. Do a lot of project with monozoom on. For now, they recently did one in France.
So if you need us to decide tonight, I'm with you on. Okay.
Any other questions, Bear? Moving on. We'll now open it up to the public hearing of the 2023 Storm Sewer Project drawings and specifications, form and agreements, and opinion of cost. If we could some grant money for this.
Yes.
Yeah, we got two hundred and fifty thousand through an art program in Storytown. That does. So I was wondering if we should give it to the Huxley company since they're closer and local. But.
Well, we couldn't have bid to them. Correct?
Oh, and so so they're they're a bit open there. There's about twenty thousand higher. So you wouldn't be able to do much work. I think with the budget constraints to grant, probably the base bit and all the two.
Okay. Okay. So is there any guarantee on that, you know?
So they weren't really good at buying, which means they had a history of performance at that.
Okay.
Quality work. And they did, I guess, divide down their references.
Okay. Those are timeframes that they.
That would be the next step that we're worried about whenever reconstruction came up, meaning.
So can we set a time and say if it's not done by this time? We've had so many.
That's the accident contract.
Okay. Well, then I would be okay with the steel excavating. So do we do a motion?
We'll close the.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any further public comment? Discussion? All right, closed public comments. The public hearing. The question is approval of number twenty three dash fourteen resolution awarding the contract of storm sewer improvements. And number two, the improvement of resolution number twenty three dash fifteen A. Resolution approving drawings and specifications born of agreement. Opinion of cost for public improvements of storm sewer projects.
Do a roll call on a resolution twenty three fourteen first. Matty?
Yes.
McGreen?
Yes.
Baxter? Harper?
Yes.
That's it? Yes. And roll call for approved resolution twenty three fifteen approving the drawn specifications form of agreement for the storm sewer. Matty? McGreen?
Yep.
Baxter?
Yes.
And Baxter? Yes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Very discussion. Move to approve the consent agenda. No discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nice habit. Moving on to departments. Water, roads. You want to talk about your newest? Your newest, newest person you're getting.
As of tomorrow, 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 we will be starting with those. Tomorrow also.
Absolutely.
Be back for what seventeen years.
All right, let's just outside of town here. Very nice. Thank you, Adam. Any questions, Brad? Any questions?
Thank you for setting up the Zoom.
Dale has more, though, yeah. Uh, the only other thing was the scrap metal thing. You will wait on that because everything gets on that later on.
You got anything from L L. Belling?
Yes, I'm about five thousand five hundred of the budget from right now going through about to give it down to where our budget is, so. Hope to get that done soon.
So, yeah. Moving on to cemetery and parks.
Cemetery maintenance is in all into our summertime mode. Everything seems to be going well. They are having problems that we need to be aware of. Fireman's days. They go in successful numbers based on the person. I'm sorry, I actually took notes. Based on the interviews that I conducted, the persons that were in charge of various aspects of the celebration. Everybody was thrilled with the turnout. Demographically, it's where the mayor wanted to see young families. That demographic is a demographic that we really, really, really are paying very close attention to because we want them staying in Cambridge. And we want more of them coming to Cambridge. And amenities like town celebrations and all the trimmings that go with it. Are certainly one thing that are going to help people connect and feel as though they're part of our community, so. There will be a pretty intensive breakdown in the parks meeting that comes up. Towards me to July. And then I know that the mayor has alluded to the fact that there may be a work session that. Makes a little bit deeper dive into this stuff, but we've got some pretty extensive notes to share. If we do that work session, I'll have him typed up and ready for that. If not, I'll have him typed up and ready to go between now and the next meeting, so I think I actually was all about it. For everybody who participated today, planning, connecting, thank you so much, especially you, Dale. You sound like a place of great man. Place of great. So thank you very much.
The libraries.
Our summer program is going very well. We're on our second week and our first day of summer program, we had seventy seven people attend. And so it was awesome. And Saturday, the parade went very well. The kids had a great time being in the parade, the library. And we had seventy seven is a magical number. We had seventy seven people come to the library Saturday. And Texas Roadhouse came as well, which was awesome, and gave out prizes. And we have a lot of great programs for the next two months on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And our numbers look really good. And we had six new families come in the library on Saturday and get a library card, so. It's very, very good to see.
We've got, what is the official thing that we're doing on Monday?
Oh, yes. And I mentioned that before. We got, uh, Marianne from the state interviewed twenty nine people from the community. And Monday she will be here working with the library board and myself and Mike, and we'll go over the data from what she interviewed. What people said about the community and about the library. And then we begin working on our five year strategic plan with that information. And I'll be at El Carte Days with the booth to promote our library El Carte as well. I'd hopefully sign more people for library cards.
When is El Carte?
Two weeks from our ours.
Thank you. Moving on to finance and economic development.
I don't have anything to report except we're doing a steering committee sometime in June. I have to talk to you about that. It's an economic about my group that's.
Right here.
Yeah. I don't know that I have to talk to the people involved.
All right, moving on. Communications. You have anything on communication?
We did that newsletter. So my, there was a two page newsletter that levered this one side and we should have had it here so that I handed it out, but. It's a start. I think we'll do it either every couple of months or every month.
Yeah. Do you have some of those in the library then, too? Yeah, I have some too. I just didn't know if we were different places to have them to just, people have stopped in and taken them off. So I have them right up on the front counter. Yeah. When they've stopped in here, when they had taken one. Did you put that on the website, too?
No, I should put that on Facebook or something. Maybe you think the website.
The website would, yeah, the website would be nice for people to be able to see that.
Moving on to fire. I don't see Matt here, but it's. That's the turn of the attorney's attorney.
Go ahead, Dale, tell them how many hundred rooms you had there.
We had zero out of line.
How many, how many was that last year?
Three.
Yeah, I bet you ran out of three hundred and a good some more, so. And your pre-will donation filled the gardens pretty well.
I'm assuming so.
Okay.
Get here the numbers for sure.
Moving on, please.
Uh, the major disturb usual traffic. Uh, we've got the speed trailer and race. You guys got any suggestions? We're, I know we talked about putting them on Park Street. We've got a lot of, I mean, we've got a lot of people that say that speed on Park Street. If you guys have a suggestion, we're on that speed trailer, we can open that up there.
How long will that be in town?
Uh, I think you move it once a week. So I don't know if he hasn't over here again. So you kind of move to go around. Put it in high traffic areas.
Moving on to discussion items. Opera House update. I sent Corey from MPH email last week, seeing where we're at with it. He was on vacation last week. It is close. It is so close to being done. I think they had a subcontractor today for HVAC come balance the AC units. Today and tomorrow. Other than that, it should be all ready to go. So we need to start the process with the attorney and give the real, real one. Get the thing going.
When you say get the thing going, we're done and get the thing on the line.
Yeah.
Do we have a timeline that if it doesn't sell in a certain amount of time, they will become landlords?
Yeah, I mean, I would say expectation to sell, best case scenario is probably ninety days. We're able to find a buyer within thirty to forty five days, that'd be good. And it typically takes sixty to close it out. It'll be probably thirty days of developments where the buyers can go in and inspect the property. Obviously, it's new. So there's probably not going to be a whole lot to inspect, but typically that's thirty days. And then once they release those contingencies, it's about thirty days to close thereafter. So I will say that the market, you know, when we started talking a few months back, the whole family investment market has changed quite a bit just because the interest rates going up. So the seller expectations have still stayed fairly high and buyer expectations are starting to, I'm certain there's a gap between them because money's, money's more expensive now. So it's, it's a little more challenging to make deals happen, but that's just where the markets at. So worst case scenario, not being up heavy now. What, I mean, at what point in time would you advise or can you advise us? Right now? Do we say, okay, we can't let this sit any longer. We need to either take it out. Can we? We talked about this a while back. I think the answer to my question is yes. We can actually put tenants in there. Absolutely. And serve as landlords while selling it. Absolutely, absolutely. And I think, is there anything, I mean, why would we not start making money on it immediately then? And it'll actually benefit you guys because if you could, if you could put tenants in there, why you wouldn't want to?
But you're from the wind. Somebody's got to be on hold or fix the grievances or something.
Right, somebody.
And that's where we're talking about the property then.
Yeah.
Certain questions that need to be asked.
Yes, it would be better from an investor standpoint to have it build or purchase it built and have income off of it. We would just want to make sure that we capture a tenant with the highest rents possible to generate the best cash flow. So that first tenant that you put in there is going to be one of the most important tenants because that's going to set, you know, expectations. And obviously, then you have these detailed conversations. But that's something you can advise us on as we start to move forward.
All right, moving on. Appliances and the scrap metal we've been at. I think I can think of a business we could have in town. And it would probably thrive.
Did we end up having a bunch of people banded there, Chuck? And a couple out of town.
Stuff showed up today still. You know, we've got grocery. It was always supposed to be from eight to noon on the evening. And there's still stuff showing up today.
They still haven't moved that trailer around, they?
No, I'm still waiting on another dumpster.
Yeah, they were supposed to bring a second dumpster.
Yeah. And, but. My recommendation is, the, the bad thing about this is people that follow the rules are going to get punished by the ones that abused it. So, but it would be my recommendation not to do it again. So at least not do it this way.
Have we had this problem in the past?
It's not in this, but yeah, it's your, there's always been some bannets, but never to the point where it's. We're filling up the dumpster.
Or is there a way when you make the contract with them that they come and pick that trailer up on Monday? This.
Well, that's where they did last year, so I don't know if they can be the same guy. I can call them tomorrow.
And I, I touched base with them first thing Monday morning, you know. But they're short drivers, too, in my understanding. I get it. But in the meantime, everybody sees that stuff.
Thinking after hours and drop off.
Well, thanks for absorbing that. It's got to say, right there in your, forget it.
I had to go and.
It'd be like somebody dumping a bunch of crap in my office, saying, have a good day.
They had to go get the trailer, his own trailer from the city because they couldn't even get in and out the door at the shop, at the shed down there.
Sorry, I had to deal with that detail.
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously, our whole goal is to clean up Cambridge and stuff, and I don't know, getting rid of this event is necessarily the solution because then it stays in people's hearts. But I do think going forward, we need to come up with a solution. And, you know, it may be chaining the fence or the lots right there so people can't drive in and dump stuff. I don't know, so.
But it just needs to be gone Monday, all of it.
All of it, yeah. So then people, they can outside out.
Even if we're having banded activity from communities within, within the ballot community, maybe some coordination so it is a valid medal of that outside the, the city properties. So that people commit to dropping their stuff off at a location that's not in town.
Maybe in Huxley?
Oh, not.
Yeah, we'll go in here.
I like what you think. That's not quite around. I was thinking maybe even the, the spot across the way from, uh, where they've got their little pile of mulch.
Oh, in Huxley?
Well, no.
Well, we can.
Maybe to our neighbors in the other community.
Right.
In the valor.
Yeah, then it's not on Dale and whoever's helping them. Now, Adam. Good luck, Adam. What you signed up for. So, but yeah, having other, if any other communities are going to use it, have other communities help.
I'm sure that's more than just Cambridge.
Yeah.
It is.
There's very more discussion on scrap metal. Moving on. Chicken ornaments. Edit up.
So, um, as many of you know, I, one reason I got on console was because I had to get rid of my chickens within six months of moving here. And one reason I'm bringing this up again is it's not just because I had to get rid of them, but through the whole ordeal, it was shared by many citizens of Cambridge with me, the desire to have chickens and knowing the history of this, that it was almost approved in two thousand and sixteen, and then there was disagreements about how many chickens to allow in Cambridge. Uh, so that's why I wanted to put it back on the table and have further discussions. Bobby and I talked about really sending this to a work session so that we could really hash out all the details and make it, you know, if we decide to go forward with this, make it best for Cambridge. Uh, I did get it all linked because work's been insane, but I did together a proposal about the chickens and kind of what my proposal is and then what other communities around us. You know, a lot of them are very similar. Some take it to the extreme. Some are really lax. you know, a lot of them are very similar. Some take it to the extreme. Some are really lax. Um, Des Moines allows thirty chickens and roosters. And obviously that's not my suggestion, uh, but to show that if Des Moines, that big of a town can handle that and they don't have the problems, uh, then you have Ames who's so lax about it that they just said, don't disturb your neighbors and we won't mess with you. So no rules there. Um, so just kind of a brief summary. So you know what they expect, uh, what my suggestion is after doing some research is that I think we allow six hens. Obviously no roosters in town. If you want roosters, you can go out of town for that. Uh, uh, that, you know, we would have a permit process. I think for the first year, it is twenty-five dollars. Uh, if you've proved within that year, years past, that you can be a responsible owner and, you know, keep a clean, not disturb your neighbors. Then we drop it down to ten dollars a year, but you do have to go through that permit process every year. Uh, that way I do think it's important you are taking away the not serious people, the ones that are going to Tyson's or Tractor Supply and seeing the cute little chicks and bringing them home and then dumping them, um, versus those that are really serious about taking care of them. And, uh, so I think the permit process is important, but I don't want to make it so expensive that people are just like not going to do it. Uh, so through that, I have some other, um, requirements. I found some other cities in Iowa, you know, have like our fence rules. It's got to be twenty-five feet from any capital, habitable building. So that includes your house. And then, you know, certain areas far further from your neighbor. So they're not disturbing that cleaning. Um, if there is any complaints, um, I think we designate somebody, not just the Huxley police, but designate somebody like on council and I'd be willing to do that. Uh, that can go and inspect the properties if there is a complaint or the permit processed, you know, um, to make sure that everything is up to our code. And, uh, so, and then there is additional fees if, that I took from some others that if we do have to come out, there is a reinspection fee because of complaints. So just that incentive, like to take it seriously. Uh, so you know, everything I took is from other cities that have been successful with this. And I do think, uh, we can be successful. And clearly backyard chickens have been around for a really long time. Many towns around us, I mean, the towns I included were Des Moines, Ames, Huxley, Collins, Nevada. I have ten of them all around us. So I think that, you know, if we do it right, I don't see how we stood in the moment when everybody else around us does. So, uh, I have all that in example. I created a example permit, you know, that's already created. Um, so council, I did get it too late, so I do apologize about that, but you didn't have that. So, uh, I don't know how to make that a work session. I think it's been motioned or what, but that way we can camera that out.
To be tabled to a work session, I think is what you asked.
Something. That's our bottom line. Just to make sure we're all on the same page, go through the details.
The road entrance, we need to work our proposal.
Yeah.
Make a motion to table it to a work session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those? Eyes have it. If you want to, uh, figure out a date after we go through the rest of this, I think there's going to be a couple more on there. Maybe. Figure out a date at the end, again. Okay, thank you, Taylor. Uh, moving on to community center rental rates.
The bar view had had that on the list and that was the one that
Right, I don't have my notes, but do you want to do that on a work session?
We've been over to it.
What is it about?
It's raising and doing more.
I was thinking with that, with not just the rental rates, I don't know if we can bring that together. Well, I don't think we were doing a pledge of because I noticed we're really starting to get more teen tips. I see tape and stuff, so I don't know if we want to upgrade the contract too, that like nothing should be hung from the walls. Is it? Cause that's getting more and more like hanging stuff.
So there, yeah.
So that causes a lot of things.
Yeah. Okay, so I agree with that especially. Raise the number to the positive.
So we need to make motions.
Okay.
All right, next up is old ball lineman.
Doc, Annie Trimble has moved her start running back to July one. So there won't be any meeting between me and her before that. Um, and Matt Baldus from
I think he's been by the new dance. Are you talking about the low league dance? We're talking about the old ball diamond where the jump is, or not the jump, the story by the river tracks. Right. The ones
We'll put that on next one. What you have to say?
Okay. You want me to say something about the job?
It's, it's
Not, uh, it's, it's new, uh, but I, I think that's a pretty complicated situation, isn't it?
It is, and it goes both ways. There's, there's a lot of things going on.
Is that something that's going to be better served? At a work session?
Yes, cause, uh, um, the owner of that business is going to come to it.
Do we need to assign some areas of responsibility to get specific details?
Yep, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I've got some details on it.
Can I, can I visit with you later?
Sure. The one thing we talked about planning in zone is it's zone commercial, so you can't put industrial storage on them. So it's a violation of code.
Okay. Right on.
And now we can push that out of this.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be filled where it came from.
But there's two things. There was also, uh, um, we ran across some filter for it also. And that's something I'm still waiting on numbers. I called, uh, I called them yesterday, last week.
Eric?
Uh, the other company that's going to move it for me.
The dirt?
Um, I called
They started, have they done it already?
I think so. No, it's not coming from there.
Isn't it? Where does it come from?
Coming from the elevator. I'll leave it out there from there.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll have some more. If, if that's something, uh, I mean, if we can fill it in and maybe make an area for outdoor parking and campers and boats or something.
Well, right now with the long range plan, this parks board is, there's research being done to make that a small fully functional campground with electrical facilities. And minus the, uh, the dump site, we, we not put a dump site down there.
Yeah.
It's just if they would have dumped it out, it would be the purpose.
Right. I think, I think you were on the board when that all went down.
When it all went down.
And the, the agreement of that.
I, I will tell you right now, there, I don't, yes, I was on the board, but I don't remember anything ever agreed to it. We go back into the minutes to find out what
No, there wasn't. There wasn't.
My point exactly.
That's how a lot of things have been done.
Yes, and then we don't need to do all that, but I would be interested in seeing what part of the, why and get into it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. And, uh, and he'll be here to fill everybody in on how that all started. So we'll move that discussion to a work session also. We'll have them all on the same.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on old ball diamond? Move on to city hall hours cooperation.
So I'd like to, um, adjust city hall hours since, um,
I'm sure you're going to say quit there.
No, but I think I'm, uh, what we had originally talked about, um, for some positions and staffing in the office that fell through. Um, I'm going to have to stay as city clerk. Um, with that being said, I don't think I'm going to drive school bus next year. Um, with the hours that I'm putting in and I would like to focus on this job here. Um, I would like to possibly do like an eight to four. But then have one day a week that is an early morning, like a seven o'clock instead of having a, a late o'clock till six o'clock that really makes me scramble to get ready for council meeting when the office is open till six and I have people coming in. Um, at five thirty and wanting things, so. Um, there's a couple options to do seven to four thirty. Um, forty is a weekend, do a seven to one and just have one afternoon. So if I need to make appointments or something, I would have that option. Uh, but we really, I don't, other than a, a straggler here and there, our reason for staying open till six, I don't really see it.
The need hasn't been there at the point.
Uh-uh, okay. Nope.
So is that something you can just type on and throw at us?
Yeah.
Have a sense of
Yes, yes.
Is that something you have to agree to right now? Is that generated by emotion?
No, no, you can just agree that we can adjust the hours. It doesn't require a resolution or anything. I just notification and posting it so that everybody's aware that they have changed.
Not that it mattered, but I kind of there, which is a little worried.
Yeah, we're not saying the numbers coming in after five o'clock.
No.
If we were busy, then I would like.
All right, very much discussion on city hall hours. Moving on to LL Building.
I've got the bids back. I have like five thousand five hundred registered to work on that.
What, okay, so you, you budgeted X amount of money and their bid came in fifty-five grand over what we anticipated it would cost me. So my simpleton head says if you're going to adjust that, we're going to have to go without some service or some work isn't going to get done.
Yeah, some
To accommodate. So that work that's not getting done, is it work that needs to get done?
There's there's a spot that we can get up with.
Cause my point is, I mean, is there, do we have the ability to look at this and say, hey, we did do diligence. We did our best. People who live here in town deserve to have roads that don't beat their vehicles to death. Who don't wipe out their kids when they're riding on a bicycle, who don't trip fat old guys while they're walking at night. Do we go instead of him trimming the, the goods and coming in on budget? Is it, can we kick fifty-five hundred more in?
I think that's what Dale is looking at the proposal. There's some areas that they have a pretty high bid that where he's not sure it's really necessary that we need to do that or that he can accommodate.
Yeah, we can still get a house from that time. We'll still be able to.
And if we had to, would you come to us and ask for more money?
What's that?
If you had to, would you come to us and ask for more money?
Why more red?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just don't want us to not do something bad. I mean, the roads are
Yeah.
Your, your mission, keep people here. That pisses people off when you're down a road. It's like chipping your teeth. What I'll have to say about that. How long have you been on board?
All right. So mayor council comments. I would like to thank the fire department for all the work they did over the weekend. They did a ton of work. Uh, the churches, um, helped out a ton at, um, at the park, had some good games there, um, all volunteered, people put the parade together. Color guard, everybody that was, uh, Saturday was a must today. And enjoys, enjoys out there, enjoys being so.
Madam Marshall, she was
With that being said, um, some of the invoices that are coming in, I'm, we're putting it under Jubilee Days where there wasn't money in the past. So that when we go to do budget and we did budget for some money for Jubilee Days, so if we get a committee going again, then it doesn't have to be, we can leave it at fireman days. We can go back to calling it Jubilee Days and let them have their own fundraiser on the same time, but those are just some things that we're looking at to make sure we know what the cost.
I'm, I'm also researching communities that have our demographic. What percentage of the community's revenue is typically dedicated to park amenities, um, and public spaces to include parks and cemeteries and that sort of thing. Um, not that we're not all be doing that, but I, I, I would I would like to not reinvent the wheel if somebody's already got a pretty round one that rolls well for their size of community and it's similar to what we do. Um, so that's, that, I think.
We need to
I don't even love helping with that. We've done some of the graphics marketing stuff first, uh, benchmarking, sorry. Looking at Maxwell and Colo and, um, okay. Kind of I'll tell you right now, Maxwell's kicking our lots on, on, on parks. But they also have really good property for it too. So
I think in that aspect, I mean, you look, obviously we don't have farmer's market here, but when they're doing the farmer's market, so much of the fundraising is for specific parks. You know, small stuff like, like they literally are fundraising for parks and recreation here. And so especially with my environment stays and stuff, that's an opportunity that we can get money, more money for that. Cause that, when we have families and stuff, they want things for their kids to do, things for the family to do together. So.
With that being said, Dale, on that email that came in, did you get a chance to mention to Matt about the Red Pride group of like one hundred coming through town?
It's So let me, let me, it's an up to my armpits and that as well. Um, this is, the guy's just being really cautious and really, really nice. He's not really asking for anything. They're, they're going to come in off of the, the harder Iowa track. They're going to cut through town. They're going to get on Forest Street and head to Huxley. And I said, what, what do you need from us? Oh, just want you to know we're going to be coming through. And I said, do you need to spend that idea? No.
Do they need food available?
Nope. Nope. I, I, in fact, I accidentally called him this morning. And he, he was perfectly excited about the way things are going. And, and he's, he told me the last time I talked, it could be as many as three hundred fifty bicyclists who are banditing. There's an enormous amount of concern and a port of riders who've got experience of Red Pride that Slater's going to be pressed to the max with being able to handle the number of riders. Because they, they're, they're basing their estimates on those individuals who are registered for Red Pride as Red Pride riders. They're not taking into consideration all the banded riders, which could be as many as twenty-five thousand
I think
banded riders.
Obviously, I, I work for the city of Ames, and so I have to work that wonderful event. Uh, so I think the last numbers we got two weeks ago was twenty-one thousand are registered and nineteen thousand. No, it was twenty-eight thousand registered, nineteen thousand unexpected or not registered riders. That is, yeah.
Good, well, and then somebody had mentioned about maybe even opening up the community center if they just wanted a break or needed to fill their water for going to bathroom or
At this point in time, my conversations with them were just, he wanted to know, wanted us to know they were helping.
Okay.
Now, as I get into June, I'll touch base with them again, cause that was, I mean, today's phone calls, I told, well, that's but there is a plan coming to visit with them later on in June to make sure nothing has changed.
Not hurt, just add a sign that says it's open if you need it. Bathroom and water.
Yeah.
We don't have to
We have an idea what time they think they're going to be coming through.
It'll be sometime between ten and noon.
Okay.
We'll be open.
So we'll be open anyway.
And just have signs that say
The, the, the thing that I want to caution us on is that we're not an official store. And if we put it out there that we're going to provide some sort of amenity to Red Pride riders, you're going to have ten thousand bicycles coming through town.
But just put a sign up and say, cause it's a restroom.
The Red Pride people don't read.
Oh, okay.
Honestly, some community members will tell you Red Pride are like, and I don't mean this to be negative, like a herd of locusts.
Oh, yeah.
And they're there and they exhaust and then they're gone.
But if you don't advertise on Facebook or anything, you put a sign up here, you have three hundred people coming through, you're not going to get the ten thousand that are going
You just need your lock for
There's certainly some lightings that follow the
Uh, because they have, they want to get off the beach trail. They want to avoid the crowd. And they feel they're, they're very apprehensive about the numbers of folks that are going in and out of Slater on a two-way road.
But there's resources for that.
And, and
And that's why we want them to run the trail because we have those resources directed.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me, their path that they're taking either. I mean, it's very insane.
We're, we've expected those few that are going to not stay on the route. But we have resources for that area. We're going to be inundated with support vehicles coming down sixty-nine as well.
And that's why I want to make sure everybody understands, he was just calling to let us know they're coming. I wanna make sure everybody understands, he was just calling to let us know they're coming, and my sense of it is, let them go through. Operative.
We can't stop them.
But if you start creating opportunities for them to stop, watch out. I actually think they're going to aim, they're, they're gonna. When everyone else sends later, they're calling me.
It's an overnight news.
He's coming through here in the day that they're coming from, they're coming through into data, come this way, they're calling. But from Slater, they're going to. Is that a big view? Just let them come through. And if it changes, I'll, I'll ensure to tell you. It's, it's a heck of an ice cap.
So they're going Forest Street over to Axle. Looking at hundred bikes on these first, four streets, these first, all the way over to.
I told him that, that makes no sense when the bike trail is spitting distance south, um, but he wasn't hearing any of it. Well, he wants to be on the main road. You, you could tell him, get on the bike trail, that's what I would do.
I mean, with that many riders here. With that many riders, I don't know, that would cause problems on the main road. And if you're using your resources. Yeah, we didn't stop them on the trail, but on that main road. Three hundred fifty riders.
Why don't we just let it marinate?
It's gonna happen anyway.
In mid-June, I'll give the catcall. And he, and he's a military, he understands spray bills, he understands things are gonna change. Um, why don't we just wait till mid-June and I'll give this catcall, I just don't want anybody to be unsafe, but I also don't want our community to feel burdened by. Something that wasn't planned for.
The only other thing that I would put into this is that last time my ride being through Cambridge. The time that it was supposed to be here was afternoon time from ten to one. People came from seven AM and stayed online, so.
But they had a good time.
But I'm just saying, if he's staying from ten to one, I am all day.
We're good, we're good. I'll keep you posted, Joe. Just read easy, my friend.
When you don't, you get people that wanna do their own thing, it just causes issues.
Yeah, cause a lot is going into this event, and the planning and the safety and all that, so for people just to throw it away.
Traffic involved, we're gonna have vehicles involved with this, all this, the conditions with people, bikes, everything else.
Along with your comments from Fireman's Days, Mr. Mayor. Have to pull up my notes, I conducted a hundred twenty eight interviews from Friday to Sunday. Most of them were in person, uh, handful, less than twelve were over the phone, and a couple of were via text. Um, and the overwhelming sentiment among those individuals that I visited with who attended the. The statistics over the weekend is that it was very, the weather helped immensely, but it was an enormously successful event. Along with my, my interview, I was soliciting ways that we can improve the celebration. Um, got a ton of really, really good cat making ideas, um. And then also got some extraordinary good ideas for fundraising. With regards to how that may play itself off, but that's also that we can have a button or just work that. Work session, I just wanna piggyback that out here, comments.
Thanks. Is there any other comments in council? Let me entertain it, let's move into it, Jared. All in favors, say aye. All of those, it made.